Alderman, can you hear us? Councilman, can you hear us? Right there. Councilman, can you hear us? Councilman Isbrand?
Good afternoon.
Can you hear us, sir?
I can.
Thank you.
I'm working off a iPad for the moment because for some reason I'm having trouble connecting on another device, but I'm with you.
It seems to be a running problem. We're just waiting for Mr. Gregory. Mr. Isbrand, we show you on three devices. Which one are you going to be using to speak on? Mr. Isbrand, are you with us? You might have the mute on your device.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Okay, so you're using the iPad. Just wanted to make sure that way I know which one to unmute.
Actually, you know what? I'm gonna log off and log back on. There's something's not working right here.
Okay, sir. Mr. Schnall, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Okay, well, we have a quorum. We're gonna go ahead and get started while Mr. Isbrand gets everything settled on his end. We're gonna call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting in order and determine. Determined Castle Hills City Council meeting in order and determinative a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We also have Mr. Isbrand joining us via Zoom. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Gregory, will you lead us? Thank you, sir. I don't believe we have any citizens to be heard. Let me just check my email to confirm. Okay, we will proceed to the first item on the agenda, which is a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance in Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. It is 602, and we'll be opening the public hearing. Okay, it is 603. We'll be closing the public hearing and moving on to item number two. Discussion and possible action on ordinance 2020-06-24 in regard to amendments to various sections of the city zoning ordinance and providing a penalty for violations of the city zoning ordinance by a fine in accordance with Section 1-17 of Chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances or by court action to prevent, restrain, correct, or abate violations with they an offense occurs being a separate violation. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Schnall and Councilman Isbrand, can you see the screen with the PowerPoint? Okay.
I can.
Councilman Isbrand, can you see it?
I do not.
Okay. Well, we'll run through the presentation. I know you do have a copy of it, sir. As I started to begin last week when we, before we had some technical difficulties about this presentation, between myself and Mr. Schnall would be taking on the presentation. And so I was going to go through each slide and get as far as we can tonight and then try to do a part two at another meeting, hopefully next week. And then, as I go through each slide, I'll ask if Mr. Schnall has anything to address since he has the more historical as far as how we got to a zoning review committee and then through the last two zoning committees itself, so. As far as the background, a zoning review committee was appointed in September 2015. A zoning review committee was appointed in 2015, September 2015. The committee was charged with not only review of the entire zoning ordinance, but also with the task of considering several areas specifically identified by then the city manager, including solar energy facilities, mixed-use zoning, planned unit developments, and home occupations. The proposed revisions recommended by the zoning review committee were presented to the then-city manager in 2016. Previous and current zoning commissions have made additional amendments to date. Mr. Schnall?
That's, that's correct. I can provide more detail on that, but I think in the interest of time, since the zoning commission has gone through all of the recommendations from the view committee, it would be appropriate just to move on unless there are questions from members of the governing body.
Okay, we'll proceed. Further background, the last two zoning commissions have done a considerable amount of work, which includes updates to home occupation and an extensive amount of research on what other cities have done to allow and regulate short-term rentals in other communities. Current zoning commission recommended moving forward with the current language in Chapter 50, including to allow short-term rentals in the community. The short-term language has been captured in Sections 50-516 through 50-524. Some of the definitions that were presented over the course. Assisted living, housing, living arrangements for the elderly, infirm, or disabled, in which housekeeping meals, medical care, and other assistance is available for residents as needed. Childcare center means a facility licensed certified or registered by the Department of Family and Protective Services to provide assessment, care, training, education, custody, treatment, or supervision for a child who is not related by blood, marriage, or adoption to the owner or operator of the facility for all part of the 24-day, whether or not the facility is operated for profit or changes for the services it offers. Continuing care facility, a facility which offers tiered approach to the aging process, accommodation residences, changing, changing needs with part independent living, part assisted living, and part skilled nursing home. Community home means a facility prescribed in Chapter 123 of the Texas Human Resources Code and all promulgations thereof. Daycare center, a childcare facility that provides care at a location other than the residence of the director, owner, operator, or the childcare facility for seven or more children under 14 years of age for less than 24 hours a day, but at least two hours a day, two, two hours a day, three or more days of the week under the Texas Human Resource Code 42.002. Guest house means living quarters with detached accessory building located on the same premise with the main building for the, for the use by temporary guests six consecutive months or less of the occupants of the premises having kitchen and bathroom facilities and not rented or otherwise used as separate dwelling. Other common names are mother, lawhouse, poolhouse, et cetera. Any questions, council? Yes, sir, Ms. Gregory?
Continuing care facility. What is a tiered approach?
Mr. Schnall, a tiered approach?
Where, where is he? I can barely hear Mr. Gregory, and I'm trying to find where is the language he's referring to.
Under the definition of continuing care facility, Section 1.
Ah, okay. Mr. Gregory, I, that's the kind of facility that, that would offer different levels of care depending on the patient's condition. Some people would move into that facility and live in the independent living section. If their health did not permit them to continue an independent living, they might move into an assisted living section of that facility. And then if, if that still was not providing all the care they needed, they would go into a skilled nursing home. So the, there are facilities like this. I know at least one in another community that, that is exactly like that. And I think that's what they mean when that, when they say tiered approach, so that they have a tier for independent living, a tier for assisted living, and then a tier for the skilled nursing home.
Thank you.
Councilman Isbrand, did you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, council. Mr. Gregory, was that? Okay, under requirements applicable to all districts, Article 2, Division 1, Section 50-36, amend subsections. Under A, minimum parking for churches, B vehicular driveway approaches, C vehicular area surfacing, D screening devices, E general parking requirements, computation of spaces of mark, marking of lots, spaces, fire lines, and crosswalks, F accessory buildings, structures, and uses, parentheses, ABSUs, definition use, placement, amounts of structure setbacks. General lighting standards, provide minimum glare provisions and reduction of light. Council, any questions? Okay.
I have a, I have a question about some of the definitions. Mr. Rappley, do you prefer to, just to go through your explanation of the whole thing, and we ask questions at the end, or do you want to? Section by section?
It doesn't matter to me. If, Mr. Schnall, would you want me to just go through the whole presentation and then come back with questions?
It's whatever the council wants, Mr. Rappley. You know, we can certainly try and address questions as they come up. I, I do have a slight problem, and it partially may be the volume on my laptop. And with the screen controlled by Mr. Zamaron, I can't really adjust the sound level on my laptop right now. But I'm, I'm comfortable with, with the council having you, with my, you know, input, go through the whole PowerPoint and then ask questions. I just think it might be easier for the governing body to ask questions as they see an issue or they have a question, just like Mr. Gregory's question a few minutes ago. It, it seems to me that's the, the best way, the easiest for the council is if they, we get to a part where they'd like to ask a question, that they ask it right then and there.
Okay, Mr. Schnall.
Get through it all before we have to adjourn, then we just pick up there at, at the next meeting.
So, Councilman Joyce, I can run through it if you'd like, and then we'd come back with the questions if you, if you wish.
Okay, isn't that the opposite of what Mr. Schnall just said?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. With respect to some of the, the definitions, this new Texas law that was passed last year in September, Texas Government Code 3000.002, it's known as now, which basically tells us and all governing bodies like us that we can't determine what materials are used in our homes or buildings here in Castle Hills, nor can we determine a percentage of a certain material that can or can't be used. So given that, it makes me wonder why we need even to define, for example, brick material or cementitious fiber board or somewhere later down as, I think, a definition of masonry. Shouldn't, I mean, basically, isn't that whole paragraph gonna go away? Because we're not allowed to specify certain materials, so why do we need to define them if we can't have?
I believe so. Mr. Schnall, and this is the one with the new state law that changed?
Right, yes. I, I think I heard that, I heard, I'd heard the councilman's comments. The change we made in 50-65 and then in, in a few other places makes specific reference to material permitted pursuant to Chapter 3000 of the Texas Government Code as a result of House Bill 3167. We, we have to allow a, a construction material, as the councilman noted, that meets the requirements of state law. And state law now says that if a building material is permitted by a national building code within the last three code cycles, we need to allow a, a property owner or a builder to use that material. However, leaving the definition of masonry and brick may still be useful in the event we do get a situation where someone wants to try and use something that they think is masonry is not covered in a nationally-accepted building code within the last three code cycles. And, and we're therefore leaving in this definition of masonry under that circumstance. It, it also is a way to let folks know that although we are going to permit any building material permitted under Chapter 3000, this community for many, many years had the requirement of a percent of masonry, the 75% masonry. And, and that may be something that would be instructive to folks and perhaps could lead them to use, you know, a more traditional masonry product that would be more in sync with the housing, already existing housing stock in the community. Having said all that, if, if it is the councilman's recommendation that we strip out the definitions of masonry and brick, we will strike them out.
Well, thank you, Mr. Schnall. I appreciate that explanation. And maybe this is a minor point, I don't know, but it just seems to me to be superfluous. You know, it, it doesn't matter what the material is, because if it's in the last three versions of a particular building code, whatever it's called, it can be used. And I respect.
Agreed. Thank you, legislature.
Yeah. No, and that's the other thing about this. It seems like you can't have an upscale community anymore, at least with respect to building materials. But in any, in, in any event.
That's right, and it, it strips away from local governments some, some important things that have historically been used to, you know, have communities maintain their appearance and character. You know, I attended a seminar in, in April where there was a 30- or 40-minute presentation just on this statute. And the commentators, you know, were generally uncomfortable with the new regime, but it's the new regime we have to, you know, live with.
Well, thank you again for that, and I respect your comments about the, the historical nature of leaving some of these things in, so I, I, I accept your recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Mr. Schnall, it seems to me that if we leave it in there, it's a good backdrop, like you said, in case they try to bring something forward that in fact is not part of the Section 300. And so my recommendation would be leaving it in there. Am I off-base, or what is your thought?
I, I don't, Mr., Mr. Paul, I don't see any, any problem with leaving those definitions in, provided that we do leave in or add in the redlined, underlined new text in 50-65 and in a few other sections so that we have clearly, you know, are clearly in compliance with state law. We're, we, we need to be in compliance with state law, but at the same time, use this in perhaps a subtle way to, you know, put masonry in the front row in, in, in front of people in the hopes that, you know, we, we won't have the, any of the negative impact of, of, of certain building materials which don't have the level of, of attractiveness that masonry and brick might have.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Mr. Rappley?
Okay, I'll continue. Article 3, excuse me, number 3, Article 2, Division 2. 50-61 adds telecommunication to the, is subsection. 50-64 replaces motor cars to automobiles, strikes descendants, making this sub, subsection applicable to AA, single-family district zone. 50-65 specifies materials permitted for in the, excuse me, for use in the district pursuant to Chapter 3000 of the Texas Government Code and adds the phrase unless permitted by applicable state law. 50-67 strikes, no vehicle whatsoever shall be parked beyond eight hours on a city-owned, unimproved right-of-way at any time. Division 4, AAA, Town, Townhouse District. 50-134 specifies materials permitted for use in the district pursuant to Chapter 3000 of the Texas Government Code and adds a phrase, unless permitted by applicable state law. I think that's supposed to be Chapter 30. Council, any questions?
Mr. Gregory?
Why was it in, struck, no vehicles whatsoever shall be parked beyond eight hours on city-owned, unimproved right-of-way at any time? Is that covered elsewhere? Is that why it was struck?
Mr. Gregory, I believe that's the case. I believe it was the zoning commission sent, the zoning review committee sent and the zoning commission's agreement that the parking restrictions ought to be in the traffic or parking code and not in the zoning code. I have not looked, I, I will admit, I probably have not looked at this since the zoning review committee looked at it in 2015 or 2016, but I'm, I'm comfortable that your supposition is exactly what we thought as well, that this was in the parking ordinance already.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Paul, did you have a question? Sorry.
Mr. Paul, can you use your microphone?
Sorry.
Mr. Rappley?
Article 2 continued. Division 8, one-story office professional district. Changes include removal of certain language in Section 50-254, 50-255, and several subsections of 50-257. Division 9, two-story office professional district. Changes include removal of certain language in Sections 50-284, 50-285, 50-287, and 50-288. FF Office condominium district. Changes include removal, removal of certain languages in Section 50-312. And then, under Division 12, H, special business district, adds Section 50-5, excuse me, 50-390, utility service items.
And, Mr. Rappley, if I might just comment, the changes in the EF and FF district were, were basically because the original zoning ordinance had what is sometimes called progressive zoning, where even in the two-story office district, two-story office professional district, District F, there was originally language that allowed that to be used as a residence. And the, the changes that, that are reflected in the red line are to eliminate the references, primarily are to eliminate the references to the use of the property as residences. That, that's, for example, in 50-254. The, the change was to take out a sentence that said, "Any use allowed in the B district." Well, the B district's a residential district. So we struck that, and then there were some changes that needed to be made in building area, that's Section 250-255. So those are the kinds of changes that were made in the E district. And similar changes were made in the F and double F district. There was also a change, the change in 50-284. And in 50-312, also expanded on the hazards or the, the nuisance risks that might come from, you know, office-type use. So new language, the, the existing language was changed to read, "No adverse effect on adjacent or neighborhood properties by reason of dust, odor, vibration, noise, or hiding, or, or lighting shall be created." And that there shall be only one principal structure on any lot. So you can't have a, a, a office building where there are multiple buildings on the same lot. And those are, that's, that kind of summarizes what those changes were and why they were made.
Okay, Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mr. Schnall.
Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Schnall, I believe there is one building here in the city in which it's a. Mr. Snow, I believe there is one building here in the city in which it's a office building, but it's used, there's also living quarters on the second floor. Are they grandfathered out of this, or-
They are grandfathered out of this. Um, if, if that residential use, however, is abandoned for the requisite amount of time, um, then, um, that property would need to be only used, um, as the office.
Thank you.
But, but an existing use that was legal or permitted when it was established, it can continue even with these changes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes, I have a comment that, um, is not related to the changes with respect to the amount of parking required in, uh, E and F. And I think probably the appropriate thing to do would be to talk to the zoning commission, but it seems to me that, for example, on page thirty, where you're dealing in section on parking space, section F-two, um, where there's sort of a gradation of required parking depending on the size of the office building. Um, one space for two hundred square feet is a, is a lot of parking. And, uh, what that boils down to is roughly five spaces per thousand square feet. And it's really hard to achieve that. So, uh, one to three hundred, which is for twenty thou, for buildings of twenty thousand square feet or larger is more standard. And actually, that's San Antonio's code across the board. So if y'all don't object, I will invite the zoning guys to just look into that.
Uh, Mr. Joyce?
Sir?
Um, as a member of the governing body, you have the opportunity, if you wish, to simply, at the point in time when this ordinance is going to be acted upon, to, um, make an amendment to modify this parking requirement to simply be what you think is best based on your comment and professional experience. Um, uh, this was not something that was really discussed by the review committee. Um, we didn't have anyone, um, who was a professional architect, um, on the review committee. Um, and, um, if the standard right now is one parking space for three hundred square feet for an office, um, it, it's an opportunity to simply make this change without it going back to the zoning commission. Um, i- if that's, you know, what you'd like to see happen, and we can do that. Um, you know, Mr. Rappley and I can work up where a change like, like that might be made.
Okay, well, I appreciate that comment, Mr. Snow. Thank you. And actually, there is another area with respect to parking, but actually, it's among those things you guys are proposing to change. And it has to do with the amount of parking in drive-in restaurants. Uh, I received a comment from, uh, Barry Mittelman, who, as you know, is a kind of a renowned San Antonio architect and currently the chair of our Architecture Review Committee, who suggested that we take down the amount of parking required for drive-in restaurants. And I can, yes. And I can, uh, point to you specifically what he proposes. Um, that would be in section fifty-three-fifty-one, subsection F, that deals with drive-in eating establishments, where he proposes, instead of the way it reads now, is two parking spaces for a hundred square feet, he proposes that there would be one parking spaces for a hundred and fifty square feet. And by the way, that's the same, excuse me, that's the same as what San Antonio requires at this time.
Yes, uh, Mr. Joyce, I did get, Mr. Rappley did forward a copy of that email to me. And that, that, my comment on that is exactly the same. If that is what is, um, recommended by the professionals who deal with this, um, on a regular basis, um, it is something that we can accommodate, um, uh, throughout, um, making the change in, in fifty-two-fifty-seven-F to make it one per three hundred feet and in fifty-three-fifty-one-F, making it one per hundred and fifty feet. Um, this code was originally adopted probably in the nineteen fifties, when there were probably more drive-in establishments becoming part of the suburban landscape. Um, there seemed to be fewer and fewer of those kinds of establishments. We do have one drive-in restaurant, um, on Northwest Military. Um, we may have one on, um, uh, Jackson Keller. Um, I'm not sure how many others we'll have, but certainly if, um, uh, this, the standard in, in, in the commu, larger community which surrounds us and in your judgment is one per one fifty, um, you know, we can, um, incorporate that change, um, in between now and the next meeting of the council, or it can be done, um, through a, an emotion to amend the, um, ordinance, uh, at the time of adoption. And I've made a note of both of those, and I'll check on that, uh, parking requirements, um, also in the F and double F districts, so we can be consistent.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Uh, Mr. Rappley? He is dealing with an issue. Give me one second, Mr. Snow.
He was at the door. No one was on him. Okay. Okay, um, we'll go start here with fifty-three-five-one. Um, though it appears this section is redlined, the only change, uh, is K, "Discuss minimum off-street parking for general assembly halls, general businesses, personal service, establishments, food services and drive-in establishments, office and retail spaces, combination establishments, shopping center, education facilities, general offices as well as clinics." Any questions on this, counsel?
Quick question, I'm sorry to be the, stipulate the argument here. Do we distinguish between a restaurant like Sonic and a restaurant like Burger King that has a drive-through where you drive in and around? Where Sonic, you drive through, you drive in and you stay there?
Mr. Snow?
I think Sonic is a drive-in establishment. And the Jack in the Box, um, for example, at the intersection of Northwest Military and Lock Hill-Soma is a drive-through. If, if you're going to drive in and park like at a Sonic, that's a drive-in. If you're gonna do a, a drive-through where you order at one station and then drive up and pay and pick up, um, Jack in the Box, McDonald's, Burger King, that's not a drive-in establishment.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Rappley?
Okay, under, uh, section five, planned use development, fifty-four-oh-seven uses replaces with purpose. Uh, the new language, uh, the planned United Development District, PUD, is a freestanding district designed to provide for the development of land as integral, uh, unit for single or mixed uses in accordance with the plan that may vary from the established regulations of other zoning districts. Is the intent in such a district to ensure compliance with good zoning practices while allowing certain desirable departures from the strict provisions of specific zoning classifications?
And if I may just interject, Mr. Rappley, um, uh, this is one of the, um, I would say the first of the three areas where the, um, zoning review committee, um, uh, was asked to specifically look at, uh, certain things. When Mr. Rappley introduced this subject, uh, a few minutes ago, um, he noted that the charge to the review committee, um, included some specifics that the former city manager had asked to be looked at. And planned use developments were, uh, one of those things, where the city manager at the time, um, probably because of inquiries from developers or others, um, uh, recommended that, that the committee look at, um, strengthening and making more detailed, um, the whole planned use development or PUD uh, process in the city of Castle Hills. Um, the committee, um, looked at several, um, planned unit development ordinances from comparable communities. And the ordinance that we, um, presented to the zoning commission and which is being presented here tonight, uh, to the city council, um, is based upon, not copied verbatim from, but based upon, um, an ordinance in the city of Chauvin Oak Park where they had had, uh, several years of experience, um, in, um, developing and implementing and living with their planned unit development, um, or PUD district regulations. Um, if you've been to, um, the, the Bentley Manor community in Chauvin Oak Park, um, uh, that was, that's probably a planned unit development. I didn't double-check it, but it's probably a PUD. Um, and as, as this language that Mr. Rappley just read and it's up on my screen, um, it really is a district that, that where we can bo, combine compliance with good zoning practices, um, while allowing, um, a fair amount of flexibility um, to a developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Uh, Mr. Rappley?
Counsel, do you have any questions?
We'll continue with the PUD. Uh, fifty-four-oh-eight, application procedure discusses application process and procedures. Uh, fifty-four-oh-nine, specification of a base zoning district. Initial base zoning controls, initial application. Fifty-four-ten, two types of plans discusses two types of PUD developments. General guidelines for use and detailed, and this goes into more detail of the PUD itself. Uh, fifty-four-eleven, conceptual plan requirements discusses requirements for a concept plan to include relation to the comprehensive plan acreage, survey, land uses, thoroughfare layout, development standards and existing conditions. Any questions from counsel? Mr. Gregory?
I have just one question. I don't know if it can be answered. Under fifty-four-oh-nine, is a base zoning district shall be specified in the initial application, and initial is set apart in script as opposed to the rest of the words. Why? Why was initial? Apparently, it, this means something significant because they have it in a different font. Why is it this way?
Mr. Snow, can you help us with that?
Um, this, I will admit, is the first time I noticed that the word "initial" is in italics, both in fifty-four-oh-eight and fifty-four-oh-nine. Um, I hadn't noticed that before. Um, but I, I do think that, um, the, the, when a piece of property is going to become a planned unit development, it's going to be zoned planned unit development. Um, and I think that the idea was so that when the city staff and the zoning commission and the city council, um, each incrementally review, um, applications for planned unit development, um, that they understand what the starting point was, you know, for this, this property. For example, we have a planned unit development, um, off of West Avenue, um, just up the street, um, from Antonian, on the Antonian side of West Avenue. And that property was probably a single-family residence, A district zoning. And it just would be, we thought, helpful to staff and to our commission, um, for, for it to be clearly identified by the applicant. Um, if this district doesn't become a PUD, it's zoned A, or it's zoned double A, or it's zoned something else. Um, I, I'm not sure there wasn't any, any other significance to the fact that the word "initial" is in italics.
Thank you.
And we can un, un-italyize it if there's, uh, a request to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Mr. Rappley?
As we continue under the PUD, uh, fifty-four-one-two, uh, detailed plan requirements discusses requirements for a detailed plan to include, uh, acreage, land uses, off-site information, traffic and transportation, buildings, uh, residential development, water and drainage utilities, open space, sidewalks, uh, and bike paths, landscape plan and lighting. Under fifty-four-one-three, action on concept plan. City council may, after receiving a report or recommendation, report or recommendation from the zoning commission, act on a proposed concept plan. And then fifty-four-one-four, action on the detailed plan discusses the approval methodology for the, uh, for approving the detailed plan. Any questions, counsel? Go ahead, sir.
I, I have one question, uh, regarding action. Is there any proviso offered here for the circumstance where a particular zoning commission doesn't take action?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And if you look at the wording of fifty-four-one-three, it says, "Council may, after receiving a recommendation or report from the zoning commission, act on a proposed concept plan." Um, that language is there because historically, and it's not redlined especially here because this is all brand-new language in the PUD district, but at the end of Mr. Rappley's presentation, we're gonna circle back to two or three items, um, that were raised during public hearings at prior meetings of this, of this council in December of last year and January, February, March of this year, as well as comments that I just saw for the first time this afternoon, um, submitted to Mr. Rappley by Mr. McCormick. Um, the reason the, the absence of a recommendation can still permit council action is by use of the words "or report." Interestingly, although historically in the city of Castle Hills, and this goes back to the first zoning commission I attended as a, oh, alternate to the zoning commission in nineteen eighty-six or eighty-seven, our ordinances just said "recommendation." When you look carefully at the local government code, chapter two-eleven, section two-eleven-point-zero-zero-seven, the language reads that a zoning commission shall make a preliminary report and a report, and a final report to the governing body. The statute does not use the word "recommendation," it uses the word "report." So in this comprehensive update, and fifty-four-thirteen is a good example of it, we have not removed the word "recommendation," but we have made a report and alternate. So if a zoning commission simply declines to make a recommendation, it would still be making a report. And its report could and will be in the form of minutes of its meetings. And so that way, we, we eliminate the, uh, delay, um, and, and, and perhaps the uncertainty of the non-action by a zoning commission and prevent that non-action from basically hamstringing the governing body. Um, you know, it shouldn't happen, but it can happen. Um, and, you know, I felt in, in consultation with, um, the council who, um, we were working with in regard to the lawsuit brought, brought by the Wayside Chapel, um, that we should in this- that we should, in this comprehensive revision, incorporate the language that a zoning commission should be giving a report or a report or a recommendation, but not leave it just as a recommendation. And in various sections, the same kind of modification is redlined because it is new language. In this section, it didn't happen to be redlined because the whole section, the whole section on planned unit developments was completely rewritten. That's why I'm looking at a hard copy of page forty-three. Everything is underlined because everything on page forty-three is new language that comes from the zoning review committee and the zoning commission. So, Mr. May, I hope that's responsive.
Thank you for that history. That's helpful.
Mr. Gregory?
Mark, in accordance with that, does it require a different vote if it's a report versus a recommendation? Does a supermajority come into play one time and a simple majority come into play another?
Well, the zoning commission doesn't generally act by supermajority. It's only the governing body which has to act by certain, by a supermajority under certain circumstances. So whether it's a report or a recommendation of the zoning commission doesn't affect that language.
So a supermajority, I've always understood, to overturn the zoning commission, their recommendation, to overturn a recommendation requires a supermajority?
Not exactly.
No?
A zoning commission recommendation to deny a zoning change
That's right.
requires a supermajority vote by the governing body. A zoning commission recommendation to approve only needs a simple majority of the governing body.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
Quick question. From a logistics standpoint, I understand that the report could constitute the minutes or vice versa. Sometimes the council meetings are just a week or so behind the zoning meetings. Do we have the capability of turning around those minutes in a week so that in the event that the commission has not taken action, the council has the minutes?
I don't see that as an issue. Typically with our interim city secretary, she's been turning them around pretty quick. But if this is the case, we can, we can do that. There's stipulations in there.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll continue. We'll continue with the PUD. Fifty dash four one five amendments discusses changes in both the general and the detailed plan and time limit considerations. Fifty dash four one six, criteria for approval sets forth criteria the zoning commission and the city council should consider when making a final action decision. Section four seventeen, time limit. This section set forth time limits or life of concept and detailed plans. And then section four eighteen, minimum development size discusses minimum lot size. Counsel? Any questions? We'll continue into home occupations.
Mr. Rapley, excuse me for just a minute. Let me go ahead and just introduce this real quickly. Home occupation is another one of the sections that the former city manager asked the zoning review committee to study and make specific recommendations to. It was the subject of several pretty long discussions at meetings of the zoning review committee. And then went to the zoning commission and was substantially changed by the zoning commission to make it clearer and more specific than even the review committee had, had recommended. And as part of that effort, you know, Mr. Rapley asked me to, you know, prepare the final wording for zoning commission approval. And I can't remember whether this was approved. I know this was discussed at least several meetings when Mr. Isbrand was chairman of the zoning commission. But I think the final approval may have come after he was no longer the chair of the zoning commission. But this is another section that did have considerable discussion by both the review committee and the zoning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Rapley?
Okay, fifty dash four two seven discusses, discusses in which districts a home occupation can incur. Fifty dash four two seven sets forth detailed specific conditions of use of, for home occupations. And then fifty dash four two nine discusses legal non-conforming use and existence upon adoption of this code. Any questions, counsel? Alternative energy provisions. Fifty dash four seventy A discusses the purposes of the regulation. Fifty dash four seventy B discusses general standards and specifics, building and freestanding systems, electrical requirements, and the requirements for an SUP with any system. Under sexually oriented businesses, fifty dash four eight six, compliance with state regulations. These type of businesses must comply with Texas Local Government Code, which are adopted by reference.
Mr. Paul, use your microphone.
Mr. Schnell, there's an awful lot of references in our zoning code dealing with sexual explicit situations, organizations, companies, whatever, nudity, the whole bit. Is this so that we can say, no, we don't want this and identify it as the, what we don't want? Or can we have a, I, I don't know that part of that zoning. Do we have an ordinance that says we have to have those type of businesses?
State law and federal law. Basically, and I'm, I am kind of grossly summarizing, say that because of the First Amendment to both the U.S. Constitution and the Texas Constitution about freedom of expression, that a city cannot have a zoning structure that makes it impossible for there to be any sexually oriented business within the city limits. Cities can, however, regulate, define, define and regulate sexually oriented businesses so long as, on the official city map, someone like the city manager can look at the map and point to one area in the city where the area or distance or other regulations would allow the existence of a sexually oriented business. The only change that the zoning review committee and zoning commission are recommending to this portion of the ordinance is the last section, the one that's on the screen now, that says that uses must comply with the provisions in the Texas Local Government Code. Because there is a specific chapter, I don't have that code in front of me right now. But there's a specific chapter in the local government code that has additional state regulations and state limitations on these kinds of businesses. Obviously, it's not the kind of thing where most any of us would want to live next door or down the street. But state and federal law require there to be at least some place within the city limits where these kinds of businesses can legally open and exist. I don't believe we have any in our city limits now. I'm not an expert on this, but I think that if we had one in our city limits, Mr. Rapley would be regularly hearing from people about it. And, and that's the reason we, we have the language in the code. This language has been in the code since at least nineteen fifty-five, nineteen ninety-five, and, and may have been in there even before that. And it's chapter two forty-three of the Local Government Code is the, is the state regulation. So I think we, you know, we do need to have this language and we need, need to have the definitions that are related to, for lack of a better summary word, sexuality, so that we can effectively regulate these kinds of businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Rapley?
Okay, under special use permits, under fifty dash four nine eight, this gives the city manager the authority to reject an application failing to include all requirements of this section. Fifty dash four nine nine requires the city manager to submit the application and report to the zoning commission. Division two, section fifty dash five one four E gives city manager latitude determined to which trees a measurement standard is applied other than trees specified in the same section. And then fifty dash five one four H is struck because it is moved to district regulations for the G and H districts.
Okay, and if we can just circle back under special use permits, as, as y'all may recall, and I guess this is before Mr. Paul returned to council and Mr. Joyce was elected to council, the council in, I believe, March of this year did amend fifty dash four ninety-seven to address a constitutional issue raised by Wayside Chapel. That change is incorporated in the document that you have on page fifty-one. And again, you'll see in fifty dash four ninety-nine, you'll see again, to come back to the, the question Mr. May asked a few minutes ago, fifty four ninety-nine, commission recommendation or report to city council. And again, in fifty dash fifty, the idea being that, you know, we, we, we believe the special use permit provisions provide a level of protection to the community in terms of what someone can do that's not automatically permissible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Rapley?
Short-term rentals. This, this section here discusses, which again, it's Mr. Schnell can elaborate, this is a brand-new section, discusses the purpose of this article. Fifty dash five one six. Fifty dash five one seven specifies definitions using the article. Fifty eighteen sets requirements for a short-term rental permit. Fifty dash five nineteen discusses registration fee, content of the application for permanent inspection requirements prior to the issuance of a permit. And then fifty dash five twenty sets forth detailed operational requirements including details that address nuisances, maximum occupancy loads, and the requirement for the local contact person to be immediately available for assistance. Go ahead, sir.
Been a long time since I took a property, so I can't remember the answer to this question. On fifty dash five one seven E, the person or entity that holds legal or equitable title. I forget what that means. What is equitable title?
Mr. Schnell?
I'm just looking for where the language is again.
Fifty dash five one seven E.
Under owner.
Okay. It's, it's a, a term we don't usually hear a whole lot. Legal title means you have a deed, a recorded warranty deed or recorded special warranty deed that identifies you as the owner. However, in some parts of Bear County and in other parts of the state of Texas, there are real estate transactions called contracts for deed. So if I own, Mr. May will like this example to remind him of law school. If I own Blackacre and I want to sell Blackacre to Mr. Rapley, but he can't pay me for it, he just needs to make monthly payments, and I want to make sure that I'm going to continue to own it until he pays me the whole purchase price, I would agree, assuming I liked Mr. Rapley, to sell Mr. Rapley Blackacre on a contract for deed. Once that contract for deed is signed, Mr. Rapley becomes an equitable owner of Blackacre. I'm still the legal owner because all he has is a contract to buy the property. And that's probably the best and shortest explanation I can give. And, Mr. May, will you give me an A for that?
Mr. Schnell, I certainly do. I only know one thing about that matter. And my property law professor said never do that kind of sale for deed.
And I have said that to so many clients over the years. You don't want to be a buyer of that kind of a deal. And under, under the new regime of state law adopted about four, five, six years ago, you really don't want to be a seller either. But that's equitable title, Mr. Gregory.
Should we have it in our code?
That's probably the best example I could give.
Should we have it in our code, equitable?
I mean, should we, you know, the, the whole concept of short-term rental and, and, and this comment really applies to the whole section. It's about what, what should a, a city do in regard to interfering with or, or, or addressing the rights of a property owner to do what he or she wishes to do with their property? The zoning review committee, because at the time the zoning review committee looked at this, the city was experiencing horrible nuisance, nuisances with short-term rental properties. The zoning review committee recommended prohibiting short-term rentals of property in the residential districts. That problem was alleviated by the elimination of one specific nuisance that done independently, plus the adoption of a stringent amendment to the nuisance ordinance, giving more authority, more teeth to city staff and to the city municipal court in dealing with egregious conduct. The overall concept, though, should we permit someone who owns a piece of property on an, on an equitable basis versus a legal basis? It seems to me that if we're going to allow short-term rentals, it doesn't really matter whether the landlord holds legal title or holds equitable title. That's a matter of private arrangement between the short-term rental landlord and the short-term rental tenant, the short-term rental occupant. I, I, I just don't see any reason to take it out. If, if the council is uncomfortable with it, we'll take it out.
Well, who do we go, who do we go after if there's a problem? The equitable owner or the property owner?
Well, we're going to have, as you'll see, as Mr. Rapley perhaps goes into a little bit more detail, there is a registration form and that registration form provides information to the city. And the city will go after the person who has registered the property and who has identified his, his or her ownership interest. So I don't think it's right to go after the legal title owner if the short-term rental is being operated by the equitable owner. And I don't think it's appropriate to go after the equitable owner. For some reason, the legal owner is the one who's doing the, the short-term rental business. This really boils down to the question of permitting short-term rentals and if they're permitted to address appropriate regulation. When we get to it, there is one section in here that, since this was, since this came out of the the zoning commission, there is a, a pretty clear indication. there is a, a pretty clear indication that there is one provision in here that would probably not withstand a challenge on constitutionality basis. And, and I do want to point that out when we get to it.
Mr. Gregory?
If, if the equitable owner is a limited partnership or an LLC, does that cause any difficulty for the city to go after the, the, this limited partnership or LLC?
Probably not, Mr. Gregory, because the, there is still an asset that the limited partnership or limited liability company owns, the real estate. So that if, uh, the city were to take action, that involved a fee or a fine that wasn't being paid, the city could look at, um, enforcing that lien or, or that fine or fee through some kind of a filing. Most likely, violations of the short-term rental restrictions would probably result in pulling the permit. And then if the person continued to operate after the permit was, was pulled, that would then go to the municipal court. And, um, once the municipal court, you know, issues a fine or a penalty, if it's not paid, there's a procedure to deal with that. That, um, most cities have contracted out to a, a collection law firm. But again, it's, it's a matter of whether you can treat a, a property owner who is an individual different from a property owner who is a limited liability company. And I, I just don't think that, um, that you can really appropriately do that in the short-term rental ordinance. There are a number of reasons, liability protection being at the top of the list, why owners of rental property would want it to be held in an entity like an LLC.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Snell.
And Mark, that section is fifty dash five twenty-four, under permit suspension or revoke, revoking appeal. So it does go to municipal court judge, suspend or revoke any short-term permit issued for the same short-term rental where the violation occurs. And there's a process if your, uh, permit is revoked by the city as a short-term operator.
And Mr. Rappley, since I just now found it, I'd like to, if I don't, if you don't mind, ask the council to look on page fifty-eight under section fifty dash five twenty, which is titled, Short-Term Rental Operational Requirements. And it's sub-eight, under, uh, fifty dash five twenty, where there is a, um, federal court decision which declared unconstitutional as violation of the right of assembly to prohibit a, uh, short-term rental property from being the site of a wedding or a party. And, um, I, I, I expressed that statement to the council. We can leave this in. If it's never challenged, it's never challenged. However, if it is challenged, unless there are, are overriding decisions, uh, by courts, um, I'm going to have to tell you that, we may have a problem enforcing it. The fact that ours does allow those kinds of functions in the G or H zoning district is why I left it in. I felt that I, there was an opportunity to differentiate the blanket prohibition by simply prohibiting that, um, in the residential districts. Because functions like weddings and, and large gatherings, you know, are more appropriately done at party centers or hotels, banquet halls, and not done in someone's front yard. Or in someone's living room. And I thought that we might be able to skate by this right of assembly issue by saying that, um, we are going to permit these uses in a short-term rental if it's located in our business districts. But I, I don't want the council to assume that we'll be able to enforce this subsection eight, if it's challenged on constitutional grounds.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Mr. Rappley?
The zoning commission, section fifty dash six one nine added, in parentheses of, or report in two places. Fifty dash six twenty-two sets a minimum time between re-application for rezoning hearing. If the previous rezoning application was denied by city council within the last six months, fifty dash six two-three allows an applicant one postponement of a zoning hearing for each body, the zoning commission and the city council.
And, um, the, the other important change, and it didn't happen to make it to Mr. Rappley's PowerPoint, is if the council referred to sec- page sixty-five, section fifty dash six one six. The addition of the words, "the district regulations of", are a function again of a, uh, careful reading of chapter two eleven of the Local Government Code. That would, if this language had been in our ordinance before now, and, or if it ever gets in, but, but as our ordinance currently reads, the reason that we had to go to the zoning commission for the rewrite of fifty dash four ninety-seven to address the Wayside Chapel's constitutional challenge about SUPs was because our ordinance said that a textual provision of any kind had to go to the zoning commission for a recommendation. But the statute says that it's only changes to the textual provisions of the district regulations that go to the zoning commission. And the district regulations are the regulations for the zoning districts, A, double A, triple A, B, C, D, E, F, F, G, and H. So again, that language is being recommended so that we have clarity. And more importantly, consistency with chapter two eleven of the Local Government Code. I will say that the, um, the review committee did spend some time on that last change about postponements. Trying to weigh the interests of the community as a whole, especially the residents who would be attending meetings and, and wanted to make sure their voices were heard at meetings against the, the concerns of an applicant. We didn't want an applicant to be able to consistently get continuance after continuance, forcing people to come back month after month. But at the same time, we, you know, also wanted to get, I give, give an applicant who needed at least one extension, an opportunity to get an extension. We tried to balance, um, the two sides that are sometimes, present during, um, zoning disputes. I, I, on behalf of Mr. Rappley, um, and myself, I want to thank everyone for your questions and your comments and most of all, your attention. Mr. Gregory may not remember this, but I do. When I was chairman of the zoning commission and the last time there was this kind of comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance, it took us forty-five minutes at three consecutive, thirty to forty-five minutes at three consecutive council meetings to get through the, uh, recommendations from the zoning review committee slash zoning commission. And we've done the whole thing in about an hour and fifteen minutes. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Mr., Mr. Rappley?
Uh, Councilman Joyce.
Mr. Snell, you had mentioned some, uh, comments from Mr. McCormick.
Thank you.
A moment or two ago, I wondered if.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Mr. McCormick had three comments that I, um, oh, I, I'm going to try and turn my volume up so I can hear you all better and I hope, I hope I'm not shouting. I'll try not to. The three, the four comments are Mr. McCormick. One was about fifty dash oh seven, or fifty dash seven. I'm going to turn to it and give you the page number for that. It is on page, page twelve. And the change Mr. McCormick is suggesting is really very similar to the change in front of you. That comment I made about district reg- regulations, that is incorporated not only, um, at the end in the six hundred cycle, it's also in fifty dash seven, as well as a final report. And it does has the sentence, and the sentence in section fifty dash seven, hopefully y'all can read. Mr. McCormick's language, if I, if I took my notes correctly, where, where you see the red line on fifty dash seven on page twelve, sentence beginning, "Should there be", Mr. McCormick was suggesting language, "Before taking any such action, the city council shall request and consider the recommendation of the zoning commission. If the zoning commission fails to provide written recommendation by the end of sixty days following the date of the request, the zoning commission shall be presumed to have made no recommendation and the city council may proceed and vote on that basis." My concern about that language is that I don't know whether a court would, um, enforce a presumption of this kind. And that it doesn't negate the statement that there shall, that the council shall request and consider a recommendation of the zoning commission. My sense is that I think we accomplish virtually the same thing Mr. McCormick recommends. In the sentence that says, "Should there be no formal recommendation or report from the zoning commission within sixty days of the initial public hearing? On such matter, the minutes of the zoning commission draft or approved shall stand as the final report." And that brings us to a question that I think was raised earlier and, and, and answered about, um, you know, the timing of minutes of the zoning commission. Again, historically, um, the, the ten or twelve or fifteen years I was chairman of the zoning commission, we'd have a meeting on the first Tuesday of the month. Within forty-eight hours after that meeting, the then-city secretary would have, um, sent me minutes of that meeting, which I would have, um, which I review, marked up any changes, sent back to the city secretary. Those changes were incorporated in and she had a signed copy of that set of minutes that could be put in the city council packet by Friday afternoon. That was the normal drill. Uh, I don't think that's been happening recently. But the concept is that, um, even under this language, even the draft minutes of a zoning commission meeting would be sufficient to inform the city council about the zoning commission's, um, vote and action. And, um, I think that provides this, um, expedited, um, result that is ultimately, I think, what Mr. McCormick was looking for. I, I want to thank Mr. McCormick. I don't see him on here, but I'd like to thank him. He prefaced his remark by noting correctly that many of the other recommendations he had made were things that, you know, were already incorporated into this ordinance, um, that y'all have before you. Uh, Mr. McCormick made a suggestion, um, in regard to fifty dash four ninety-seven to, um, modify the language. Fifty dash four ninety-seven is the section was recently changed to deal with the Wayside situation. It's on page fifty-one of this ordinance. And what Mr. McCormick is suggesting is a change to fifty dash four ninety-seven B. And he would change that, um, language entirely to simply say that, the uses allowable in the A district are, as set out in section fifty dash sixty-one. In all other districts, the following uses may be requested and leaves in general care hospitals and nursing homes. I, I gave some thought to that change and, um, I do not have a problem with that change. If the council would like that change incorporated in, we don't have to vote on it. But if there is a consensus tonight, but if there is a consensus that that language be, um, incorporated in, what I would suggest is that, um, y'all give that indication to Mr. Rappley independently. And then we will, um, incorporate that new language as well as the new language about parking, um, that was discussed earlier this evening. The third comment Mr. McCormick made was to get fifty dash five ninety correct. And, um, he must have been looking at a prior version of this ordinance because the ordinance that, um, was attached to the packet has the language for fifty-five ninety that was adopted, um, one or two meetings ago. So it is the latest language which called for, as you all did at the meeting earlier this month, went around the, the dais and each member of the governing body appointed a person to the zoning commission. The mayor appointed a chair and there was discussion and some action on alternates as well. That's new fifty dash five ninety. It's in here. And the fourth recommendation from Mr. McCormick was a recommendation that he did make earlier, uh, during Citizens to Be Heard. It was a recommendation that, um, I felt was not appropriate to make. It was to delete the last sentence of fifty dash six forty-nine. The last sentence of sixty dash five, uh, si- fifty dash six forty-nine says, "Proceedings before the committee", and this is about the zoning review committee, "Proceedings before the committee shall be in accordance with the provisions of the most recent edition of Roberts Rules of Order." And, um, Mr. McCormick's concern that he expressed during the public hearing was that, um, the, um, Roberts Rules of Order wa- wa- was not written for governmental bodies. And, and that's true. Roberts Rules of Order was really written for, overall procedure for all kinds of meetings. The city council, um, last June, canceled or rescinded or revoked, uh, prior local rules of order and adopted Roberts Rules of Order, um, to govern its proceedings. The Attorney General of Texas has stated both in its open meetings handbook and in at least two, um, attorney general opinions, one by, um, Governor Abbott when he was attorney general and one by, um, Dan Morales when he was attorney general, statements that recognized that Roberts Rules of Order, um, is something that is adopted, by governmental bodies. Under the circumstances, it was my view and remains my view that unless until the city council adopts new local rules, the use of Roberts Rules of Order latest edition, as long as in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, is the best, uh, course of action. Mr. Rappley, um, and I have discussed, um, working on, local rules of order, um, patterned after a few samples that he is assembling and trying to simplify them, um, for our community. We don't need, uh, a, a hundred pages. We don't need twenty pages. We probably don't need the six hundred pages of Roberts Rules. Rules. But Robert's Rules is the, the gold standard for, for meetings. You know, I serve as a parliamentarian for at least one and probably more than one local nonprofit board. And I take my Robert's Rules, or I take excerpts from it when I attend meetings, so that I can, you know, help the procedural part of a meeting move forward. If the council wants to take this out in, in regard to the zoning review committee, I don't think the world will shake. But overall, Robert's Rules provides steady guideposts that in the absence of having local rules, seem to me to make sense to have something. Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Those were Mr. McCormick's four comments. And, you know, as, as, as I've indicated, on two of them, I think, you know, we've already done one of them. A second one, I think is easy to do. The third one, the first one I mentioned, you know, I would commend to you the provision that's already in the red line, as it seems to me to accomplish virtually what Mr. McCormick is recommending. But I, I am glad that Mr. Joyce reminded me that we, we did need to do that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Mr. Paul.
Can I make two comments? Are we at that point? I mean...
Are they germane to the topic, or is it an announcement?
No, no, to the topics. There's two items. Number one, I was concerned, I don't see anything that allows the city to control hostels. And I know that one, at least one that cropped up a while back, and those things, they're not short-term rentals, and yet they can have fifteen, twenty, twenty-five people if the house is big enough. And hostels are short-term overnight type of things for generally younger people. And, uh, Mr. Snell, are you aware of anything that we have that allows us to control that? And if not, how could we approach that? We can't do that tonight. But I just think it needs to be addressed, personally.
A couple of comments. Thank you, Mr. Paul. And, and Mr. Rapley may be able to help on this, too. I know the word hostel was used in the discussions by the zoning commission at various points when the short-term rental ordinance was being discussed. And the definition in fifty dash five one seven on page fifty-six, short-term rental, a privately owned dwelling, including but not limited to a single-family dwelling, multiple-family attached dwelling, apartment house, condominium, duplex, or any portion of such dwellings, rented by the public for consideration and used for dwelling, lodging, or sleeping purposes for any period less than thirty consecutive days, but shall not include habitable accessory buildings. It does exclude hotels and motels and private clubs and things like that. But, Mr. Paul, if your suggestion is that we specifically regulate hostels by adding the word hostel to this definition of short-term rental, that is the shortcut we could use.
I don't know that that would necessarily cover it, would it? If we just added the word to it, would that take care of it? I mean, it's a different type of clientele with different circumstances. And this one I'm talking about, there's like fifteen, twelve, fifteen bunk beds upstairs, but then downstairs, there's bedrooms that they use for short-term rental. And, I mean, it's, I just don't think it's good for the neighbors, the neighborhood, and I don't think it's something that we should, if we could eliminate, allow.
Well, I, you know, we can look and see whether the other portions of the short-term rental provisions could be applied to the property you're discussing. And if they could, then I think adding the word hostel to the definition of short-term rental will get us part of the way there.
Okay.
The problem is, the same issue that came up earlier about someone who is currently operating when there was no prohibition or no, no regulation of short-term rentals. So we could not immediately enforce against an existing short-term rental. However, I would think that this matter might be investigated by our code enforcement officer to determine if the property in question was in compliance with all our other codes.
Mr. Paul, I'd like, uh, Mr. Zamarone to elaborate. I think he has familiarity with that property.
Yes, sir, if I may. Thank you. Uh, there are a few comments that would probably address your concerns. Uh, first and foremost, I understand that you're saying that there isn't a specific prohibition for that term in the code, but there are specific prohibitions for use of areas and houses having to do with international code as we've adopted it. And the International Building Code, International Property Maintenance Code does discuss square footage per occupant of a bedroom. So if the code officer, or myself as a code supervisor, had a probable cause to be able to retain a search warrant through an affidavit for probable cause to go into the facility, let's say, for instance, an EMS call has identified several people at one time in, in a particular room, that can become a violation of international code. And that's kind of how we would, it would be a catch-all for a hotel or a hostel by any other definition. And it also would address what Mr. Snell was saying, that if things are grandfathered in, it would be difficult to enforce. Well, it already is enforceable. We actually already have enforced it on an illegal group home that was occupied in, in particular bedrooms by far too many occupants than the International Building Code allowed. So having said that, uh, there, there is a mechanism, but I'd also like to throw a little caveat out there, too, if I may. And that is, if, if a room is occupied and it is observed by an impartial third-party observer, the police or fire EMS, for instance, that it is occupied at a time, say, for instance, four or five times in a ten-by-ten room, then, and they can articulate that in a report, then it is a clear violation and we can act on that. But if we're given some piece of information that rises to a level to allow us to get a search warrant, and that's kind of ethereal in the first place, and we go in here and we don't see it occupied, then the argument actually becomes, and Mr. Snell can probably shed a lot more light on this scenario, it becomes a situation where a homeowner can have as many bunks as they want in an unoccupied room, and it becomes a violation when it's occupied. So you have to catch that moment in time when it's occupied above the maximum occupancy for a resident. We're not even talking about definition of hostel or hotel, uh, as per International Building Code. So we do have a facet.
Okay. And so I, I appreciate that, Mr. Zamarone. Uh, because the agenda does not permit a broad discussion other than of the new zoning ordinance, it is appropriate for the, the question raised by Mr. Paul to be answered, but it is not appropriate for it to be discussed at this meeting. Um, I would suggest, Mr. Paul, that you follow up, uh, with Mr. Zamarone and Mr. Rapley, and that if that follow-up indicates that this is something to bring back to the council, um, Mr. Rapley can put it on the agenda for the July fourteen council meeting. But I think the, the, the short answer right now, you know, I think is that we add the word hostel to the definition of a short-term rental and, and start with that change to perhaps dissuade or preclude another one of these kinds of uses at a different location.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
I have one more quick one.
Is it germane? Because we don't want, we want to stay within the confines of the agenda.
It has to do with the zoning thing here.
Yes, sir.
Page nineteen. I've had a couple of people call me, two, I said a couple, not people, with reference to the recreation vehicles, the storage, et cetera. And the question I have is, some people in the city, I know, because I've seen them, have Class A motorhomes. And to me, it seems like as long as that motorhome, whether it be twenty feet, eighteen feet, twenty-five feet, fits the other parameters about being hidden, being behind, et cetera, I don't know that we need to put dimensions on the motorhome or the recreational vehicle. That's basically my question. Because there are some places in the city that have all the room in the world, that they can park their recreational vehicle, no matter how big it is. And, but as long as it meets the other parameters about being parked behind a fence, being this, being that, I don't know why the twenty feet is a limit, twenty-two, twenty-five, eighteen. So those are my comments. And Mr. Snell might be able to help me with that.
Well, I, I, the only help I can provide is sort of apparent on the page. Um, it's the existing ordinance. It's been that way since nineteen ninety-five, and the review committee and the zoning commission didn't recommend a change. Hearing your comment, though, uh, again, unless there's some objection from a member of the governing body, we can incorporate that revision into this document, along with the other three or four things we've talked about this evening, and recirculate it to the governing body, get it on the website for people to see and comment on if they want, have a public hearing, either at a special meeting or at the regular meeting in July, and move forward. It just, it just wasn't something that caught the attention of the review, review committee or the zoning commission.
Right. Well, as I said, I do not own one, do not plan on owning one, so it's not a personal situation, but it was brought up. And it makes sense, as long as that item, that recreation vehicle is hidden behind the fence and that, like I said, I don't, to me, the dimensions don't matter, but that's just me.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay. Uh, with that being said, we will proceed to announce some mayor and council members. Uh, we'll give Mr. Isbrand a little bit of time. We'll start with Mr. Gregory. Mr. Joyce?
I have none this evening.
Mr. May?
I just want to thank all of those within the city governments, uh, city manager, chiva police, that were so helpful in being responsive to a private citizen here in Castle Hills that wanted to sponsor a Black Lives Matter march. I think it's an important statement that we have people in this community that care about social justice. I want to commend the police department for being so professional in keeping the marchers and everyone else involved very safe. I have had many comments, uh, from outside of Castle Hills that are positive. This is an image of a community that is welcoming, and I think we need to recognize that. Secondly, I've heard many comments from citizens who are happy with our, uh, police force and the professionalism. Want to, want that to continue. So I want to work going forward with the police department and being sensitive to the very issues that brought, uh, the Black Lives Matter to our doorstep.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Paul? Mr. Isbrand?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I didn't have the opportunity to make comments as you went through the, uh, uh, presentation on the zoning ordinance. I wanted to use this opportunity to say, um, just very briefly, that although Mr. Snell commented that he was able to present the entire body of work and the review of it in about forty-five minutes, which, uh, many thumbs up for your ability to do that, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the work that Mr. Snell's review committee invested in a, about a year's worth of time, I believe it was, in going line by line, item by item, through the ordinance that you have before you tonight. It was a tremendous undertaking, and I think that the members of the review committee deserve, uh, particular recognition for that. I'd also like to recognize the members of the zoning commission, particularly those that served up until twenty nineteen, that invested about two years' worth of time in working with the review committee and Mr. Snell to, again, go line by line through that, to try to present to you tonight, as comprehensive and thorough, a revision of this ordinance as possible. And specifically, I would, uh, recognize the commissioners who were serving at that time, Tom Aiken, Jana Baker, Scott Gray, and Mike Flynn, who contributed greatly to this effort. So to everybody who is involved with it, um, I commend you, and I, I thank you all for your commitment to it, again, in particular to Mr. Snell. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Uh, with that being said, I just wanted to thank, thank everybody for, uh, being here with us. Encourage you all to, uh, wear your mask when you cannot social distance, social distance, wash your hands. Uh, it's my understanding that the hospital's stress rate is elevated right now, so we want to do what we can to help with that. Uh, we should be releasing information in the near future about a mobile testing site in the city of Castle Hills that, uh, Metro Health is working with us on, and hopefully make that a little bit easier for everybody to get tested. And, uh, I think that's it. Mr. Rapley has some comments.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, specifically on this chapter fifty, the zoning, I think the idea, um, what Mr. Snell and I talked about was obviously to go through this PowerPoint. And if we needed another meeting to kind of dive further into short-term rental, home occupation, or any other matters that we can, it'll be council's wish if you'd like to have another meeting, or we can just put this on the July fourteenth, incorporate the input from today and answer any other questions related to chapter fifty at that meeting as well. But I will send out an email asking if the interest is there from council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. May, second by Mr. Joyce. All in favor. Meeting adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you, Mr. Snell. Mr. Isbrand.
Thank you.